My name is Suzanne Robbins. I'm here on behalf of the League of Women Voters with the Portland area, and I'll be moderating this ballot with school board candidate. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government, works to increase the understanding of major public policy issues, and influences public policy through education and advocacy. League of Women Voters' policy is not to support or oppose any political party or candidate. It is great to see so many members of this community taking the time to educate yourselves about the issues facing schools and school leadership. The election is June 13th, and there are three candidates on the ballot. Welcome candidates. Incumbent Board Member Jennifer Libby, incumbent Board Member Matthew Pines, and non-incumbent candidate Alicia Johnson. I would like to also welcome, we have in the audience two current school board members, Chris Hickey, could you raise your hand and let us know?
Thank you.
And Sarah Julie, currently serving on the school board. Are there any other elected members of the community? Okay, thank you. There is information about the league and each of the candidates in the back of the room, and restrooms are right out there. Okay, tonight, we are here to learn about the three candidates on the ballot for the Falmouth School Board, as well as to learn about the work of the school board. As an introduction to the work of the school board, here is the description of the role of a school board member from the Falmouth Schools website. "The school board serves as a governing body for the schools with responsibility for ensuring that the schools adhere to state law. Members of the board, while elected by town residents, are not representing constituents in their role on the school board, but rather representing the state. Board members have authority as a single board voice, not as individuals. Board responsibilities are defined by the state and fall into the following categories: Select the superintendent, set policy, adopt an annual budget, manage the collective bargaining process for employees of the district, and act as a court of appeals. Members of the Falmouth community are welcome to share their perspectives with the board by contacting board members directly or participating in the public comment during the monthly business meeting. Also, candidates should understand the following statement from the Falmouth School Board Code of Ethics: 'I will recognize that my responsibility is not to operate the schools, but to see that they are well-operated.' This candidate night will proceed as follows. Each candidate will have two minutes to introduce themselves with an opening statement. Each candidate will then be asked to respond to questions written by a committee of community members, former school board members, students, and the League of Women Voters. Candidates were not given the questions in advance, rather they were given the topics about which they would be asked. The order of the questioning will alternate between the candidates and has been established by picking numbers. Each response will be limited to two minutes. So that you know how much time you have for each question, a timekeeper will hold up a yellow card to indicate that you have 30 seconds left, and a red card to indicate that your time is up. When you see the red card, please finish your sentence and stop speaking. I reserve the right to interrupt you if you continue to speak beyond your time. Following the questioning, you will each have two minutes to make a closing statement. We will not be taking questions from the audience. I encourage audience members with questions beyond those addressed this evening to reach out to the candidates and ask them. Candidate contact information is on the literature they have provided in the back of the room. The format for this forum is moderated question and answer. As such, there will be no debate on any issue, but rather an expression of each candidate's position. A few ground rules for the candidates. Please keep your responses within the time allotted, and you do not need to fill the entire two minutes if you can make your point in less. Please do not challenge, accuse, or state the positions of other candidates in your responses, as there will not be an opportunity to respond. Please do not respond to audience interruptions. Ground rules for the audience. Audience members, we are here this evening to learn about the candidates. To ensure everyone has an opportunity to learn about all three candidates on the ballot, I ask you to please hold your comments and your applause until the end of the event. That will allow us to ask the maximum number of questions in the time that we have. You may feel strongly about certain issues, but please, keep your opinions and responses to yourself until the end of the event. All candidates have agreed to be recorded. Before we begin, we toss a coin to determine the order. Matt will go first. Let's begin with opening statements. Matt, you have two minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you to... Um, thank you to Falmouth Memorial Library for hosting the forum, and the League of Women Voters for facilitating, and thank you, Sue, for moderating tonight. This is a very different crowd than my usual crowd, a couple of hundred teenagers and staff, so I'm gonna really work hard to keep my dad jokes to a minimum tonight. My name is Matt Pines. I'm seeking a second term on the Falmouth School Board. I'm the proud parent of a current sixth grader. I'm a husband, a small business owner, and a 10-year Falmouth resident. My wife and I own a sleepaway camp for teenagers. In this capacity, I have over 25 years' experience working with adolescents in the most profoundly impactful setting I know of. In addition, I'm a PhD candidate at USM Muske, looking at the impacts of technology, as well as tech-free our experiences. My wife is also a clinical therapist, working with a primarily teenage clientele. I say all of this in order to establish that my focus on the school board is the students and the student experience. I have also developed an immunity to teenage eye-rolling, which is valuable, with the aforementioned sixth grader. I joined the school board in the summer of 2020, and so I'm acutely aware of the impacts of coding on all aspects of our school system. And I've been consistently inspired by the dedication of all those involved in educating our students through the most challenging period in public education in living memory. I feel I bring several strengths to the school board. Business ownership provides a broad background of skills. I immigrated to the US from Australia, so I have a somewhat outside perspective, and I'm skeptical of the role of technology in student and community life. Was that, did I see the red card out of the corner of my eye?
No.
I hope that tonight I can articulate my commitment to maintaining the historical excellence of the Falmouth Schools, while also helping our professional educators adapt their educational best practice to best meet the individual students where they are, creating a school environment that welcomes all, celebrating students' strengths, yet offering support to each and every student. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Alicia.
Good evening. My name's Alicia Johnson, and my family is relatively new to the Falmouth community. We relocated here last August when my husband accepted a role as the head of HR for iDex, and he asked me, "Do you want to move?" And I said, "Where?" And he said to me, "There could be worse places, so let's go." And we landed in Falmouth, and this year has been really wonderful for myself, my husband, and our two children. I'm a stay-at-home mom to a fourth grader and a sixth grader, but I am also a very dedicated and active volunteer within the schools, and I have spent my life really advocating for public education. We were five years in the Oakland school system, where I helped found a group that fought against privatization and encouraged people to support public schools in a way that was becoming challenging in Oakland, California. And we've had a lovely experience so far in the schools. I'm impressed with the educators, the administrators, the way that people respond to the needs of parents and students, and I'm really looking forward to using my skills. My background is in policy. I have a master's degree in public administration. Bringing those skills to the school board, and as Matt said, just continuing with the tradition of excellence in Falmouth, that is one of the main reasons my family is here, and I want to see that that continues. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm used to middle schoolers, so you are all sitting way more still than they do. So this is lovely. What could go wrong? So I've been a teacher for 30 years. I'm a mother of three teenage children and a lifelong Falmouth resident. I think I bring a unique set of qualities and perspectives to the school board. I am a union member in my home district, to the home district where I teach. I've taught pre-K through college-level courses. I'm invested in building bridges, elevating voices, building relationships. I would say that that's sort of what anchors me. I have children that run the educational spectrum from 504 accommodations to a child that hasn't asked me for anything since seventh grade. So I sort of see, you know, a variety of different learners in my home. I'm dedicated to everything that makes Falmouth an amazing place to live. The people that have been stewards of our town for a long time, I see a lot of you in the room, are educators, the students that we all care so much about, and my decision to run for reelection is really anchored in pride for our community. I love Falmouth. I loved growing up here, and I was very grateful to be able to move back home. Three years ago, we were building a plane as we were trying to learn to fly it, and that was very stressful. Now we have this plane that we've built, and there are some really amazing outcomes with that, but also unexpected things are lurking around the corner everywhere we look in education, and what I've learned in the past year is that things are just simply different. What does that mean again? I should stop talking.
You have six seconds.
I, I'm here to speak tonight, but I really look forward to listening to you. I'll do better next.
If you teach middle school, we can't scare you. Okay, we will move on to the questions, and just so the audience knows, they don't know what the questions are going to be. So if you have seen events like this before, where the candidates knew the answers to, knew what the questions were going to be, they have a lot more time to prepare. So keep that in mind as you listen to their responses. Question one, Alicia, you'll be the first to respond. Falmouth has a standing committee on intercultural awareness and inclusion. How has the work of this committee contributed to equity inclusion in Falmouth Schools, and what should be their focus going forward?
This topic is really important to me, and one of the reasons that I'm sitting here, since I have a mixed family, and it's different when you, like I said, we were in Oakland and now moving to Falmouth, it's quite a change. But I think DDI work, people tend to talk about like race, or you know, things like that, but it really is about people, meeting people where they're at, what are their needs, especially our children. They have a lot of different needs, and it's very individualized. And in order to prepare each child to move on and become a contributing member of society, we need to meet them where they're at, and that is different for each child. So I love the work that the board has done, that this committee has done. The report, I read through it. I thought it was excellent with the community engagement, the recommendation, and I think moving forward, the school district really should focus on its findings. There was a lot of interesting things in there about gender disparity, about curriculum, how we can streamline the curriculum to make it consistent, so that the teachers just aren't guessing, they're actually following in order. Parents can see that curriculum, they can participate in how it is implemented, and I think that's what they should do. And I love the goals that just engage with people, that honor how we're different, and respect that, and then try to move forward in a way where people feel that they belong and that they are engaged in their education at school.
Thank you. And now, Jen. Jen, tell us, I'm gonna just repeat a little bit, I have reasons for doing that. Talk about the Intercultural Awareness Committee, and what should be their focus going forward?
The committee has done an amazing job so far of trying to gather information, so that we can start to learn about our learners and our staff and our community. So that was sort of step one, assessing where we are. Children having equal access to high-quality education is so important, and building and connecting and making sure that voices are elevated is so important. And through some of that work, it can get a little difficult, it can get a little muddy, these are difficult conversations. And I think that the work is centered in trying to build up all people and all voices, and it's not about feeling guilty or shame, and I think that that sort of gets a little, a little muddy for folks. These are sometimes hard and complicated conversations, and it asks a lot of the people, it asks a lot of teachers to hold this space and have these conversations with our, with our children. And professional development, especially going forward, helping teachers have the resources that they need to do what is coming out of committee work, but also the voices of parents and how they feel. And it's not just, you know, you know, some sort of runaway train. It's everyone working together in the best interest of all students, because when they are connected, they feel safe.
Thank you. Matt, please talk about the video on intercultural awareness and what they should be focused on.
Thank you. I think one of the big, sort of for me, one of the big overarching ideas of intercultural awareness committee brings forward is, our schools don't work unless they work for everyone. Every single student in that school has an equal opportunity and equal right. And one of the things that things work like the Equity Audit has done is highlight where we have work to do in the schools. And so I think that it, part of, for my mind, part of the diversity, equity, and inclusion work is the fact that it's not an endpoint. There is no like, okay, we've reached our goal, we're done, we can put that project away and move on to another thing. It is an ongoing process. That work should, in all reality, never be complete. And so what the committee has already done is, I think, incredibly laudable, and is something that other districts are rightly jealous of. I think that what Falmouth has done with things like the Equity Audit, like some of the cross-media projects that happen in the professional development space for the staff, a huge, the curricular alignment that both Alicia and Jen sort of spoke about. There's lots there still to work on. I think that that curricular alignment piece is huge, having, having a way, a mechanism by which every student is getting an equal education and access to the same level of rigor is vitally important. And that's not to say that we shouldn't respect and encourage teachers to bring their own individual strengths to the table, but through doing this work, I think we can raise the floor for all kids without putting a ceiling on anyone. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, question two. Jen, you'll be the first to answer question two. "The school board is responsible for the safety of students and staff. What is currently in place to ensure safety, and what might you introduce to make students and staff safer?"
Thank you for this question. This has really been the cornerstone of so much of my work. My dad was a police officer in Falmouth for 40 years, so I just, this is really just important to me, and the best way to promote safety in our schools is when everybody belongs. When everybody belongs and everybody feels connected, our schools are just safer, safer. One trusted adult can make all of the difference in the world. We have done a lot in terms of adding school resource officers, school counselors, advisory programs. We have much more robust reporting mechanisms to, so that children who might be suffering don't fall through cracks, updated security systems, door closures, and just our entrances have been bolstered. And going forward, it's, we had a document called Challenge Success, which really looked at do children feel connected? Do they feel, that's what I'm, do they have someone, and do they feel safe at school? And all of those things build upon our school safety. And as far as going forward, we do have to abide by state laws, and some of our drills need to be common sense. What age group are we practicing with? What are we explaining to them? How is that being implemented? And I think that that's just an ongoing conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt, could you talk about what's currently in place to ensure safety, and what you'd like to see going forward?
Yeah, thank you. What is currently in place is, I think, pretty, pretty solid. I think we have really good emergency plans, crisis response plans. Some of the stuff is not widely disseminated to the public for obvious reasons, but I think that we have a remarkable degree of collaboration between the schools, between town officials, first responders. That is in large part to Jen's diligence on this topic. She is, she is, I would say, as close to an expert as I know on the school board on school safety, and we've made tremendous gains over the last few years. I think that there is some, a lot more work to do, though, that we don't confuse security with safety. Safety means more than just physical safety. Safety also means psychological and emotional safety, and if kids don't feel safe, if they don't feel safe psychologically, emotionally, they're not going to learn. They can't learn, like neurologically, an unsafe brain does not learn. So what do we do to increase the climate of safety, the climate of belonging, and feeling like you're welcome, and that your school is a place where you can go relaxed and learn? And I think that we have work to do on things like vape pens in bathrooms. That makes some kids feel really uncomfortable, and so we need to, we need to work to continue our climate of safety, while at the same time paying attention to our safety plans, our security plans, our building, entry and exits, all these sorts of things. So there's work to be done, but we've done a lot of it over the last few years.
Thank you. Alicia, would you please talk about what's in place to ensure safety, and what you'd like to see?
As a parent, I've been pleased to see how the Falmouth Schools have handled different situations. I think it's good, the communication network, we receive notice that something has gone on at school, that we don't either need to worry or we need to be concerned, and I think that really helps parents relax, you know, you don't need to rush to the school, which also creates another issue with safety. And I know we had one incident earlier this year, and I did feel that the administration was really working closely with law enforcement in the best interest of our children and community, and I really appreciated that. So I think that's what they're doing really well, and I think there are some things that we can continue. Of course, as a community, we're always learning things about how to keep our kids safe, and I think that a lot of the DDI work can translate into that, like Matt and Jen were talking about, students feeling comfortable, they feel like they belong, they're accepted, they're not the other, and that can look different for every child. And I also think the counselors and social workers, it's really vital, these people see signs, they can recognize them in our kids, and can raise an alarm that there's something that we might need intervention for. And so I think training our staff, even our kids and our administrators to see signs to look for, for better safety. And then I think, too, I have seen that the administration implementing restorative practices for kids, kids make mistakes, they do things that we don't understand why, but they deserve redemption, they deserve not to be, you know, kicked out of school for whatever reason, and I really think that goes a long way in creating a sense of belonging in schools and a safe school.
All right, question number three. Matt, you'll answer first. This is a two-part question. "How should a school board balance the need to manage the tax burden on the community while providing quality education? Also, is there an area in the school budget where you think money would be better spent elsewhere, or where you think more money should be spent? Please be specific."
Thanks. Sorry, I'm just writing down questions to make sure I don't forget the second part.
You're all welcome.
So this is, as you pointed out in your introduction, this is one of the very few actual responsibilities of the school board is, is to develop a budget, and you know, it's often said, the cliche is that the budgets are an act of prioritization, and this is really the crux of that. How do we, how do we balance current and future taxpayer burden against current and future school needs? And it's not, it's not an easy process, but I think it's one that benefits from a, an input from a wide variety of sources. Obviously, the professionals who run our schools charge with developing that budget, which the school board approves, and through my observation of it, I've been really proud of the transparency of the process, but I've been quite alarmed by, it's almost in an alien language, and I think the act of educating the board and the public and the taxpayers about the budget is as much the work as it is developing the budget. In terms of, you know, how do we, or where can we find money in the budget to move it and prioritize other things? That's a really tough question. The budget is not developed with a bunch of drills and excess in it. The budget that is presented to the town is a tight budget with real deep thought and insight into every single line item in that budget. If I had my druthers, I would love it if every kid could walk and bike to school, and we were able to shift money from things like buses and diesel fuel into bike lanes and walking paths, so that it was safe for kids to get to school in other ways. But I also realize that's a little high in the sky, so, sorry. We can always drink.
Alicia, how should, how should you balance the need to manage tax burden, providing all the education? Alicia, how should how should you balance the need to manage tax burden, providing quality education? And is there an area in the school budget?
Thank you. Um when I think about the school budget, I of course, there's so many demands, just like in our house, we have. A lot of things we can spend our money on and we only have a certain amount to take from. Um my first thing is that. I really trust educators to um let us know the needs that they are seeing, what our students need, where there are holes. Um things that they could use to make their jobs easier and more effective. So um that's one thing that I would um listen to. And take into great consideration. And I think uh when you're a taxpayer, sometimes it's hard to understand. How it's so big or what exactly you're paying for, but I think the community of Fama really values education. And they're very proud to have excellent schools. And I think explaining to taxpayers. What why you are choosing, what you're choosing to spend your money on and what kind of value it will bring to the greater community. Um can it be a very uh effective and inclusive way to help people understand how we as the um. Overseers of the budget are making those types of decisions. And um also listening to what the community wants. And I think sometimes that requires a pivot. And we have to be flexible because in certain years, different things will take priority. Things will come up that we weren't expecting and like COVID and. Um all those things. And so uh I think that's really important. Um specifically, I have heard from community members that they would like to have more money spent on special education. I know we have an excellent program. But I'm interested in hearing more about that and um. Investing some time in seeing where that can be uh mitigated and making some people feel more secure with that.
Thank you. Jen, would you talk about balancing the budget and where you think there was like a few changes?
Sure, it is a really arduous process. Um. So several years ago, I was the finance committee chair and negotiated several contracts. And the educational landscape is so much different now. Just coming out of COVID, everything we do is extremely different. Um the biggest factors um in balancing the budget are really listening to our administrators. They meet. You found this very unique. So in Fama, all of the administrators meet together. They sort of vet what they feel like they need. Sometimes one building might get more than another, but that's because that they've discussed that and brought it to us. And we trust that they've asked the teachers, the educators, what it is that they need. Um and then that's what they bring to the table. And we want to provide a high-quality education for all of the children in Fama and support like professional development for teachers. So. A lot of it is listening to the building administrators. And then we have these meetings with town council where we talk about the mill rate, what we're proposing, the amount of money. That we're asking for and we work together to try to balance. So if there's going to be a new fire department that's going to be built, you know. We can work together and I really appreciate that process. I think it's really robust. Um and I think we have a very collaborative approach here in Fama and really looking at what's best for students. Um we all have high standards for education and for our students in in town. I think our public forums were very um helpful. And um there is no doubt in my mind about the reallocation question. Uh that goes, I'm I'm a teacher. That goes to teachers. Those are the people that are are driving the bus and taking care of our children every single day. They work. Extremely hard and that is where I need to put the money in our but our greatest resource, which is our future.
Thank you.
Okay, question number four, and Alicia, you'll answer first. Student success at graduation can be measured in many different ways. What accomplishments are most important to you and what can the school board do to foster a climate of success for all students?
Thank you. Um. My husband always says that our job as parents is to not be our children's friends, but to make sure that they leave our home. Being productive, contributing members of society, that they give back to their community. And that they have purpose. And I think school is such a huge part of our kids' lives. They spend most of their time. Every week at school and. I mean, of course, I want to see every child graduate. I want them to be equipped with um. Things that uh advance their talents and skills. Uh they have already come in. Most of us. You know, are interested in things specifically and I want to see that our schools have that uh available for our kids. To invest their time in and to make them want to continue on, whether that's in the trades or at college. Or um traveling, different types, all different types of things. And so. I would say that, that I want kids to be productive, contributing members of our society. That when they leave Fama Schools, they have a deep sense of service and giving back to the community wherever they land. And that they, when they land, they land equipped with the skills to um be successful in their lives.
And Jen, tell us about what student success is for you and how can the school really foster a.
Thank you. Um well, that's why we're all here, right? Because we want kids to be successful. That's why you're all in this room on this beautiful day and that's why. We're volunteering for no good deed goes unpunished. So um you know, I think that when I just think about. What I would want from my kids and yours would be that they can communicate. I feel like we're we're almost really. Weird spot right now where people have have lost the this art of communication and sitting and being able to. To sit at a table with someone that you might not agree with. But you can still sit there and see each other as human beings and have a conversation and maybe lean into their thinking a little more. And you know, we just in a lot of ways become very polarized and you know, I I wish for all of our students that they are able to have a conversation. With anyone and look them in the eye and and enjoy disagreement from time to time. Um I want our children to be able to think for themselves, but we need to think, figure it out, kids. You can do it. We didn't come home until the lights went on, you know. I think be being able to explore, being able to make decisions, being able to think, being able to reflect. Uh reflect on behaviors. Um I really believe in restorative practices, which is they strengthen relationships. Um create opportunities to learn accountability. And when you are having a restorative moment. You are also reflecting on the repair and how important that is in life. Um and I think that all of those things sort of back to the basics of what makes us human is what we need to get back to. And we have well-equipped teachers in the Fama School Department to instill those values in our kids and. Um and I think the school board just needs to keep supporting those folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, you tell us about student success, what the school board can do to foster.
Yeah, thank you. Um. Student success, I think, looks really different depending on way you're sitting. So if you're a community member who's interested in. Engaged citizens, it's gonna look different than if you're an employer looking for someone to run a CNC machine or to, you know. Have um exceptional uh programming skills. And so. Uh I think the most important question we need to ask is how do our students define success? What does success look like to them? Um because it's their success we're talking about, not ours. And much as parents, we need to. Not push our own dreams onto our kids. We also need to accept that our kids uh in our our. And going out into a world that none of us are gonna recognize in twenty or thirty years' time. And so I think that we need to have. A system in which they can define and achieve success that matters to them. And having a sense of stealth, a sense of identity, a north star when they graduate from high school. You know, we call ourselves the navigators and we expect our our students to be able to leave school. And be able to navigate through our world. But navigators take other people with them as well. So we want them to be leaders. But we also want them to be teammates. We want them to have a sense that they have a place where they belong. That they're not living in a placeless world. And we need to have them feel like when they go out into the world. They know that they can trust themselves, trust their instincts. Um. We're fortunate. We have incredible professional staff and leadership. They know how to do some of this stuff. They know how to arrange multiple pathways to success. As we've seen in recent board meetings where we've done recognition, there's some truly incredible high school seniors who succeeded in some really diverse ways. So we have the staff, we have the capacity to do it. As a school board, we need to keep empowering those folks to keep doing what they do best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, question number five, and Jen, you'll be the first to answer this one. The work of a school board can relate to contentious topics as strong feelings can be expressed by parents, students, community members, and other board members. Explain how you plan to proceed in resolving a contentious issue, especially if you do not share the opinion of those expressing firmly held opinions.
Well, I'm lucky because my sister's in the room and uh and we're we're Portuguese, French, and Irish. So I mean, we have strong feelings. And we shared a bedroom growing up. So um you know, I think that strong people join boards like this because they're passionate. They're they're, you know. We are all, many of the board members are coming from places where they are very passionate about things that they that they feel. And I think that when strong feelings are present, that is a motivator. It can really help people get things done. Um and we need that to sometimes move things forward. Um. Really, sometimes you just have to stop for a minute and pause and figure out what it is that that person cares about, especially if it's a community member. Or what are they afraid of? Or what is drive? I think sometimes strong opinions, the first thing is to just pause and listen. And think about where are they coming from? What's motivating these feelings that they're having? And figure out their why. And when you can figure out their why, then you can sit at the table and you can have a much more robust conversation with them. And sometimes, you know, when people I find these days just sort of like go right in, I think that that can lead to. To things that are more contentious than they really need to be. So for me, strong feelings are really about caring and softening the moment and figuring out. Um what is what's going on? And always in those conversations know that I don't know everything. And I can learn a lot from the person sitting across from me. And um I really look forward to those strong feeling conversations. I look forward to having conversations with people where uh we might not always agree. And I I love leaning in. And coming out on the other side with a little bit of a different opinion. Because everybody has something to say and everybody's voice matters and. My voice will not stop. Barbara, you're so nice. You're just red card. I forgot where I'm going with this. Oh, yeah, there you go.
Matt, tell us how you're going to proceed.
Um, thank you for the reminder that school board work can be sometimes contentious. Um uh. I mean, it's, I think part of the role of of school board is to sometimes have some contentious and difficult conversations. We're all in this together and we really need our students, our administrators, and our educators to all be really on the same team. And I think that sometimes. School board as a somewhat outside um body can be the place to have these conversations. And as we talked about in the D E I work earlier. There's big issues, there's important issues. People are going to have different opinions. We need to have a way. To have those conversations and do it in a way that we can all turn around the next day and still be neighbors. And still be educators and friends and interested in the best interests of all of our kids. And so. How do we handle those contentious situations? First off, we assume good intent. No one, no one wakes up in the morning being like, I'm gonna make someone's life difficult today. But they have things that matter to them. They have things that they care about. And as a school board, our role is to listen with empathy. Try to understand why there might be some tension and then try to help our administrators, our educators. For people who um are are responsible for implementing the day-to-day of actually. Doing the work that they they need to do and helping resolve whatever those issues might be. None of it's easy, but it shouldn't be easy. This is people's kids we're talking about. It's the most important thing. Nothing is more important. If it's not contentious, we're probably doing it wrong, right? We probably need to have some times where we don't all agree. But we need to be able to have civil discourse, come to an agreement. You said earlier, a board has no individual, a board member has no individual powers. The board acts as a board. And so. It's the end of the day, we've got to come to a conclusion. So, thank you.
And Alicia, how will you handle?
I think it's very similar to what Matt and Jen have said, which is um the first thing is to listen. As a school board member, you should not come in with your mind made up and ready to just make your decision. But there are a lot of stakeholders, uh our kids being number one, our educators, parents, administrators, and so on. Um so I think just coming with an open mind, an ear to listen and to, like they said, really lean into the empathy piece. We all walk different journeys. We have different lived experiences and that brings us um. To think different things about and a lot of, like Matt said, when it involves our kids, we get very passionate. We love them so much. Um we all think our kids are the most special ones, as they are. And um. So I think that's really important just to be open, be open to dialogue. Don't be afraid to have those difficult conversations. And see where you can meet people who disagree with you and how we can come to um. An understanding that at the end of the day sets our children up for success.
Okay, question number six. Um Matt, you'll answer first. Fama Schools' mission and strategic vision statement calls for students and staff to be proactive in addressing issues of mental health. Describe what that means for you and how the school board should participate in the school.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I think that's one of the 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 aspects of the mission statement that is um. To to my mind, most important. Um back in, I think, January or February, the C B C released a. A survey, a new first behavior survey that was um alarming, sickening in. The reported rates of mental illness, mental health issues. Amongst young people, um in particular depression, anxiety, things of that nature. And I don't think it's just students. I think many adults I know. Um inside and outside the schools. Things are tough and they've been tough for a few years. And um. If we don't address it, then where the rest of the stuff that we do in the schools doesn't matter. I spoke about a little bit earlier, kids who don't feel safe, who don't feel like they belong, who don't feel like they're connected, that they can't learn. And so I think that that report was alarming, but it also offered hope. And at the end of it, it had three recommendations. Those three recommendations basically boil down to connections, connections, connections. Connections with peers, connections with staff, connections with the community, connections with mental health supports within the school. These things matter. And as a school board, I think we can help prioritize those things in the uh in in our policy decisions. Um. I think that we need to recognize that this is not a problem that we can spend our way out of. Therapists and counselors, not only are they not cheap, but they're in front trees. We need to come up with other methods as well. And I think that that thinking about connections is a huge way of of, you know. Achieving the goal of solid mental um. Mental, emotional, and social health for our kids without spending a bunch of money. And a final plug for what the school board recently passed, the. Cumulative work of many school boards, we're gonna have therapy dogs in the schools soon. And it's a free and absolutely delightful mental health support. So. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. And next, Alicia, could you talk to us about addressing mental health issues?
Yeah, I think that's so important, especially now um after we've come out of COVID. Um our students have spent a lot of time being isolated, as most of us did. And so there are a lot of things to unravel there. And I just think um receiving feedback from our students and staff. And families about what do they. and families about what do they need to feel safe, secure, and healthy when they're on the Falmouth campuses. Um, of course, therapy dogs are a great addition to the schools. I love dogs. But, um, and I think as a school board, you know, we make policies. So, and we fund things. We are, we agree to fund things. And so I think we really have to ask ourselves, what kind of policies will be effective? And, um, what investments can we make that really invest in our students? So that they feel when they are at school, they belong, they know they can, um, there's someone there to come to with if they're having problems. If they feel, um, unsafe and that they have trusted people around them to bring those concerns to. And so I think that is something, um, to look out, funded. Um, really receive that feedback of what our students, staff, and parents think we can do better in our school campuses.
And Jen, how was that?
I really appreciate this question, um, because it's just, I know I see it in my classrooms. You probably see it in your homes in our community, just the staggering, um, mental health crisis. And I think that the school board has done some really great things. Uh, I'm chair of the wellness committee. And we have brought in a lot of the school counselors, um, and have brought, we, we, wellness committee brings a lot of teacher and staff voices to the table. So that we can hear directly from, from the teachers, from the staff, from the people working directly with the kids. Because we don't often get those opportunities. There's often like a building principle between us. Um, and a lot of those conversations have been about reducing the stigma of mental health and increasing S E L, which is social emotional learning. Not to, not to take the place of other learning that needs to happen. But when kids are not prepared or they're thinking about the bad thing that happened last night, or the thing that happened on their way to school, or somebody that's cyberbullying them, they cannot learn. They are thinking about something else. Um, and so we need to make them whole so that they can learn. Um, screens, um, the school board can have parent information, caregiver parent information nights where we can talk to people about screens, how to limit them, um, what the effects of screens are. We have lots of outdoor spaces where kids can learn and teachers can learn. And being outdoors is a natural move. There, um, excuse me. I think we have a lot of increased, um, communication with parents and caregivers. But the most important thing I wanna say at the end of this is that if we don't prioritize the mental health of our teachers, our educators, and our staff, we cannot help kids because the teachers make it all happen. And when they are not well, they are not equipped, just like, uh, parents and caregivers to take care of children. Thank you.
Final question. Um, Alicia, you'll be first. Um, I read this earlier, but I want you to hear it again because it's something that often is a, a bit confusing to community members. What the role of a board member actually is. According to your school website, the school board serves as the governing body for the schools with responsibility for ensuring that the schools adhere to state law. Members of the board, while elected by town residents, are not representing constituents in their role on the school board, but rather representing the state. Board members have authority as a single board vo- voice, not as individuals. Or responsibilities are defined by the state. As my question is, now that I've repeated that, as an elected member of this board, how will you ensure that you are representing the state and operating as a member of the board and not as a single individual?
Well, I think, um, the easy answer is that the state has given us laws and guidelines that we should abide by. And I think it's really important to understand those laws. It's really important to understand how they impact our community and how we can hold our superintendent accountable to implementing those laws in our schools. And that we are meeting, um, the dates and things that we are given by the town and the city and state to, um, implement our, um, our responsibilities. So I think that we should not work as an activist board, each person, um, working for their own pet projects or any of that. But we really, uh, it's, it's from the top. We, we know our mission. We are responsible for setting policy. Our employee is the superintendent. Um, she's accountable to us. And then we are to implement the laws from the state. And so I think that is really important, not to just come in with your own idea of how you're gonna change things and mix things up. And, um, it doesn't really help to work like that when you really need to work as a unit. So.
Thank you. And Jen, how will you ensure you're up?
Sometimes this can be really difficult, um, when people are passionate or, um, you know, when we disagree as a board. We just, we don't always agree, but we do speak with one voice because that's our charge. Um, and so really, it's trying to work to be a bridge builder between the community and the board and the school. And trying to keep the, um, active listening, open communication. Trying to have policies align with the community values, collaborate, and trying to be a champion for students. And at the end of the day, um, that can be, um, a very unifying process and, and sometimes a very difficult process. Um, but I think, uh, we, our charge is to participate and use one voice in the way in which we respond to community members, um, which I think is one of the hardest things about being on the school board. Um, that really is, uh, just very, very difficult. But it goes back to having those conversations, having conversations with people in the community, searching people out that don't always agree with you. I think that finding people that when you disagree, that is a source of strength. And I think that that's really a lot of what makes me who I am as a board member. Sometimes at the end of a meeting, I will find who I think is the most disgruntled person in the room, and I will go straight into what I call the belly of the beast to try to connect with them, to find out what's going on with them. I want to hear about how they feel and why they feel the way they do. And then bringing that voice back to the board is a real source of strength for us. And I think it's part of what, um, I think, uh, is one of the things that makes me a fully decent board member. I'm doing my best. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. And Matt, uh, how will you ensure you're representing the state and operating as?
Yeah, thanks for this question because I think that, that this is, as Jen said, this is to me, one of the hardest parts of being on the school board is just this, this sort of the difference between the expectations and the reality of what the, um, the rules around being a school board member actually allow you to do. And so, um, ob- obviously, and you know, the, the, the cliche is the, the role of the school board is not to run the schools, but to see that the schools are well-run. And so, you know, that on the surface seems very cut and dried. However, reality is when it's seven individuals who have to speak with one voice, that requires coming to some level of consensus. And so I think that the role each of us can play as individuals on the board is understanding what the issues are, understanding from the public what issues are. If there is an issue that I'm not personally familiar with, like trying to seek out and, and understand from someone who does have personal experience, what that issue is, and potentially bring that voice to the table and try to argue. I will never be able to argue as eloquently as someone, um, maybe, you know, who, who has a personal interest in a particular topic. But that doesn't mean I can't try, understand, and advocate for that perspective. And at the end of the day, it's, it's like anything. If you can persuade the other members of the board to see that perspective and to agree, then we can make decisions that, that can align with that. But, um, as, as individual members of the school board, I think we all have a responsibility to see that the schools are well-run. And if we see something that we think does not align with that, we have an obligation to say something to, um, try to, try to bring the board's attention towards that thing and make it right. And so we speak with one voice, but that voice is made up of multiple. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, candidates for your thoughtful responses. And just as a reminder to the audience, and when I came in late and didn't know, they did not know what the questions would be before they got here. So, they deserve some credit for that. Um, and now we will do closing statements. Um, you each have two minutes for a closing statement, and we will start with Jen.
I'd like to start by thanking the League of Women Voters for this really amazing opportunity in democracy. This has, um, been lovely. Um, I would say that tonight, you know, we have been invited here to speak, but I want you to know that I have a strong desire to hear from you. And I'll be waiting after if you want to ask me any questions. I love the hot seat, actually. Um, I have some materials on the back table and, um, just like in my teaching and just like in my interactions with you, every one of you brings different gifts to the conversations. So there's one, um, there's bullet points. If you just like to stand, there's, that's back there for you. If you like to read a little more, there's a little more narrative. And if you don't wanna read or read any bullets, and you just wanna like get the hard facts, there's just like one thing with really no words back there. Um, so I, I think the thing that, um, that I really love about being on the school board are the difficult conversations, the disagreements, and trying to find common ground with other people. Um, I have a neighbor who has started a chess club for kids who don't speak the same language. And they can get together and have a great time. We all speak the same language. We have to get back to talking to each other, to calling each other. My number's back there. If you wanna call me, call me up. I would love to talk to you. Um, I would love to hear from you. I care what you have to say. I care what you have to think. And I think that in some ways, we have stopped gathering and stopped talking to each other. And I think if we did, we would have fewer misunderstandings. Um, so I would, um, be honored to earn your vote. If you have any other questions for me, I would love to take those. And I thank you for your time tonight.
Yeah, Jen, and Matt, you have two minutes.
Jen, um, thanks to all of you for coming out tonight. And, um, thanks again to Sue and the League of Women Voters, the library for organizing and hosting. Um, understanding that our, our, our kids are watching us, um, I'm, I think I am seeking a second term for, for several reasons. Um, my focus is and always has been on students. Um, I think along with, with Jen, have the most direct experience working with advocating and I hope making life better for kids. Um, I think that, that that matters. And I think that having a voice that has experience and understands what it's like for kids and the challenges they're facing, I think that's important experience to have on the board. Um, I'm the product of public education. I believe in public education. I am passionate about public education. Public schools are the bedrock of all the good things. Um, our community does not function without good public schools, but they're only as good as the people in them. And so we have excellent schools here in Falmouth because we have excellent people. We have excellent people engage with the schools. We need to continue that excellence. And I think that our schools must work for every single student in our community. Not only do we have the legal and ethical obligation to provide that excellence for each child, but the school board has to work hard to help our educators meet these obligations, and it's not easy work. Finally, I just am so, um, hopeful about the amount of participation that I've observed over my first term on the school board. The number of people who are engaged with schools is higher now than any of my ten years in this town. That gives me a lot of hope. The more we get engaged, the better the processes are. Thanks for coming out. I love you both.
I wanna echo the gratitude for this opportunity and for the League of Women Voters in the library for hosting and for these really thoughtful questions that make you think about these topics. And, um, in a deeper way, it's been really, um, great. So I just wanna say that I continue to be thankful that my family has landed in Falmouth. And over this past year, really getting to know people in this community has been wonderful. It has been the easiest transition we've ever made in our fifteen years of being married and, um, my husband's career. And so I really come with a sense of pride and gratitude for the Falmouth community and especially for the Falmouth Schools, because my children have been through a lot of changes. And when you're ten and twelve, it's really hard. And everyone has really tried to hold them, hold their hands, uh, push them forward and move them on. And most of that has taken place in the schools. And so, uh, I just feel a lot of sense of gratitude for that. And I'm really excited to bring my passion for public education. Like I said, I'm really excited to meet more of you, to hear your questions, concerns, your successes, and, um, to answer anything that you might wanna know from me. And, um, I'm available. My material is also on the back table. And I'm happy to speak with anybody who would like to chat after or anytime in the next couple of weeks. And, um, I'm committed to be an inclusive and committed voice on the school board for our kids to make sure that they have the best chance of leaving our schools, uh, equipped for the rest of their lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Falmouth Memorial Library and Keelum Roses for setting us up and helping with this. Thank you to the League of Women Voters of the Portland area, the forums committee specifically. Thank you, Jen Lancaster from the League of Women Voters of Maine for recording this and putting it out onto social media. Thank you, Barbara Kaufman and Anne Lein for being our timers. Um, and members of the planning committee for this event, um, who put tremendous amount of thought and time into these questions. And if any of you, I don't know if any of the parents of our student members at the committee are here, but we asked their question. They wanted to know about student success. It was a student question. Um, and also the audience for participating in this educational forum. Um, in the back of the room is a table for information about the League of Women Voters and a table for our literature from these three candidates. Please pick up material on your way out if you haven't already. And can we now have a round of applause for the candidate? Great job. And thank you for stepping up and putting yourself out there for the community. Um, we have a few moments before the library closes. The library closes at seven. And all the candidates have said they are willing to chat with you. So if you have additional questions, you may have at them. Thank you, everyone, for coming.